This regular meeting of the Macon-Bibb County Commission for August the 20th, 2019. And again, say, uh, thank you all for being here. Uh, we, we will start our meeting, as we typically do, uh, with an invocation, uh, and the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, so would you please stand, uh, as you are able, for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance? Dr. Mack, will you come up to the podium and lead us in prayer, sir?
God almighty, God, we stand now at this meeting of county officials, and we ask that you would now embody your presence upon each of us, that we might know that you are the leading factor of all that will be done. We ask of you now, God, that we be able to submit ourselves to you, and that we might be able to honor and revere the leadership that is established through the Bibb County Commissioners. We believe and know that the decisions that are made, the thoughts that are, uh, discovered is all for the betterment of this city and this county. And we do believe and know that the government still though rests upon your shoulder. We ask of you now, God, to give us peace, give us joy, give us love, give us harmony, give us that understanding that will help us unite our community in a time that we feel there may be areas of division. We do believe wholeheartedly that together we stand, but divided we will fall. We need a view, God, to be that super glue that will hold us together, together in spite of the difficulties and the challenges that lurk upon us daily. We believe and still trust that Macon-Bibb is a great place to live, a great place to work, a great place to serve, and even a great place to just rest, retire and relax. Have your way now in this meeting. We need a view, God, to not only look upon us in this meeting, but our world seems to be tealing and tolling on the brink of chaos and despair. Doom, disaster, and even death is overpowering, overshadowing us on every corner. But we still look to you, because you said to us in Psalm 121, that if we would lift up our eyes unto the hills from whence coming all of our help. Our help comes from you. We feel much, God, like when we look at the economical tragedies that we are experiencing. We feel much like David, as he stood against Goliath. But we are assured that we can still defeat the giants of depression, the giants of disaster and doom, because you have equipped us, much like you did David, and have given us five smooth stones. We ask that, God, you would equip us, that we might know how to use them, when to use them, and where to use them. Now, look on the mayor, look on each Commissioner, look on each and everyone that have come tonight representing their perspectives, and yet, God, I pray that all will be heard and results will be gained. We ask now that you would receive this prayer in the precious, powerful, prolific, positive, yes, and most importantly, that personal name that we call Jesus. Let every heart say, "Amen."
Amen.
Amen. And amen.
May you please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please be seated. I would certainly like to express my appreciation to, to Pastor Mack, a native of Cochrane, Georgia. Uh, Dr. I.E. Mack, born to Ms. Leanne Gordon, nurtured, reared, and divinely directed by his great-grandmother, um, Ms. Alethea Wright, and godparents, Ms. Ruth Robinson, Robertson, and the late Reverend Wilson C. Robertson. Dr. Mack became a pastor of Unionville Missionary Baptist Church in 1986. Dr. Mack, my, my, my. 1986, a lot, a lot of growth out there in the village. Absolutely right. He was nourished with graceful qualities, stern substance, and seasoned maturity that would embolden his spiritual formation, align his personal growth, and ultimately shape him into the man he was destined to be. Dr. I.E. Mack is married to the former Eloise Klot of Byron, Georgia, and they are delightfully honored parents of one daughter, Brittany. Dr. Mack, again, thank you for what you are doing here in our community, and thank you very much, sir, for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Uh, Dr. Mack, um, also, uh, was responsible for bringing the folks that led us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, first is, uh, Austin Hanks. Austin, where are you? Stand up if you will, please, sir. Uh, Austin Hanks is an eighth grader, uh, at, uh, Clifton Ridge Middle School, where he has maintained an all-A average in all classes in his middle school term. He was awarded President Barack Obama's Academic Achievement Award for academic excellence. He's Jones County Rising Star student, and has been an A student his whole educational journey. Austin is an avid singer. He's a member of the Unionville Missionary Baptist Church Youth Choir and Youth Praise Team under the leadership of Pastor I.E. Mack, and also a member of Mercy University Youth Choir. His first love is football, and he is the center for the Clifton Ridge Cougar Football Team. Austin's the son of Ms. Sarah Hanks and the grandson of Ms. Deborah Davis. Austin, thank you for being here with us. And Jacoby Gallimore, Jacoby, would you please stand? Uh, Jacoby Gallimore, born June the 11th, 2004. His proud mother, Audrey Gallimore, currently resides here in Macon with a 15-year-old sophomore at Central High School. As a second-year member of Junior ROTC in FBLA, he continues to maintain good grades in all of his subjects. He's a member of the Mercy University Upward Bound Program, looking forward to pursuing a career as an architect. Jacoby is a member of Unionville Youth Choir. He also greets and welcomes the congregation on second Sunday mornings, and is a emerging leader, uh, with the Children's Church Ministry, five-year disciple of Unionville Missionary Baptist Church, uh, where Dr. Mack is the pastor. Isn't it great, uh, when we hear so much bad news about youth today, that we have two such wonderful examples of our youth today? We thank both, uh, Jacoby and, and thank you, Austin, for being here, and good luck in all of your future endeavors. We're sure you're gonna make us proud. Uh, next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes, and there are three sets of minutes. The pre-commission, uh, meeting that we held on August the 6th, the, uh, special call meeting where we approved the millage rate on, uh, August the 6th, and our regular commission meeting held on August 6th. Are there any changes, corrections, or if not, can I get a motion to, to approve the minutes as written? Motion by Shepherd, second by Schlesinger, all in favor of approval of those three sets of minutes, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and those, uh, three, the sets of minutes, uh, are approved. We have, uh, an invited guest here with us, uh, tonight. I hope Ms. Violet Pope, uh, is here with us. Ms. Pope, Violet, are you here? Ah, there you are, there you are. Would you please come down to the podium? And Commissioner Lucas, I understand you've got a presentation that you wanted to make on our behalf.
Good evening. Um, it's my privilege, um, to, at this time, call upon all of the members of the Macon-Bibb Pedestrian Safety Review Board. If you will come forward, please. These are not all of the members, but these are the ones who could be here today. You will be pleased to know that you cast a unanimous vote in favor of putting into our Code of Ordinances, the Pedestrian Safety Review, uh, Board. The mayor signed it. Uh, it is a part of our code. Um, and that group is made up of a varied group of individuals who each brings, uh, his or her own level of expertise in a certain area. The Pedestrian Safety Review Board was put in place because we ranked so high as far as pedestrian fatalities. And we realized, and the Board of Health realized, and other entities realized, that this was a problem that we needed to deal with. And so, uh, thank you, uh, members of the Commission, for putting, voting to put this into law. And thank you, members of the Commission, the Pedestrian Safety Review Board, and Mayor Rickert, for all of the support. This group is being recognized, not only on the state level, but nationally now, for its efforts, uh, in educating our public, especially our young ones, about safety and looking out for our seniors. So if you don't mind giving a round of applause to all of these folks who serve you.[612.04][612.04](Applause). And, uh, Mayor, I'm gonna, um, read this and then hand it to you, if you will present it to, uh, Ms. Pope. This award, um, Ms. Pope recently attended the, uh, Georgia Highway Safety Conference, which was held in Savannah, right? And, uh, at that, uh, conference, they presented the Highway Safety Champion Awards, they presented the Directors Awards, and also the Highway Safety Champion Awards. And Ms. Violet Pope's name appears on their program as the award recipient on behalf of the Macon-Bibb County Pedestrian Safety Review Board. Ms. Pope wrote the grants that have allowed, the grants that have allowed us to receive a highway safety grant for education for Macon-Bibb County for the last two years. And so, we commend her, we thank her for all of her work, and she continues to work just as hard as she can. Uh, out on the streets, you can see her out there, reminding people of what they need to do and where they need to cross, as you can, all of the other members there. So Mayor, would you, if you would, as the Chief Executive of Macon-Bibb County, uh, recognize and present that award to her?
Certainly. Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Uh, this, uh, award, um, is inscribed as follows. Highway Safety Champion. The Georgia Governor's Office of Highway Safety recognizes Violet Pope, Macon-Bibb County Pedestrian Safety Review Board, for outstanding dedication to reducing crashes, injuries, and fatalities on Georgia's roadways. August the 13th, 2019, Georgia Highway Safety Award Luncheon. Uh, Violet, let me present this to you, along with, uh, my appreciation for all of your hard work and diligence. You are a role model for all of us. Thank you very much.[750.13][750.13](Applause).
I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Rickert, the members of the Bibb County, Macon-Bibb County Board of Commissioners, the Macon-Bibb County Health Department, the Bibb County Sheriff's Department, the Bibb County School District, most of all, the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, for all of their support, and the members of the Macon-Bibb County Pedestrian Safety Review Board, for all of their support throughout the past three years, uh, for pedestrian safety here in Macon-Bibb County. Uh, this is a passion. I'm on a mission for God. And I think sometimes people, they can tell that, that I'm really dedicated and passionate about this. So, I'm all about trying to help save lives, whether that's spiritually, mentally, or physically. And I just appreciate all the support from everybody that's helping make the streets of Macon-Bibb County safe. So I just say thank you so much to the community, and we will continue to work together as a community to achieve Vision Zero, which is zero fatalities and zero injuries.
The, uh, next item, uh, on our agenda are public comments, uh, on agenda items, and this is, uh, the opportunity of the public to comment to us before we get to an agenda item, uh, on which we will vote, because we, we certainly want to hear what you have to say before we vote. However, I understand and would ask for, uh, special permission. I understand that we have, um, a citizen, uh, here, uh, who is 94 years young, uh, who has, uh, an issue, uh, about a non-agenda item, but with your permission, I'd like to take her, um, at this point. Ms. Joyce Jones, Ms. Jones, thank you very much for being with us. Would you please come to the, to the podium, uh, and speak into the microphone? You can adjust it, uh, so that we can all hear you, and we appreciate your patience and appreciate you being here.
I'm near it, yes.
Talk, talk directly into the-
I'm scared too. But anyway, I want to appeal a bill that has been sent to me from Bibb County, a garbage disposal, that I have two garbage cans, which I don't have one, but I have been charged with two. It's 1661 Bonneville Road. Her address is the same as my address. It was a utility house that I made her own property for her to live in, and she is, uh, disabled and is not able to pay her garbage bill, and I think one is enough for us, for the both of us at one time. And I'd like for you to consider.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, you, you are very kind when we've got your information here, and, and we'll check into this, uh, for you and, and see what, what we can do, and thank you very much for being here.
Okay. Thank you.
We, we appreciate it. I hope I'm that ambulatory, if I ever get to speak 94.[998.11][998.11](Laughter). That's wonderful. Uh, let's see, uh, Mr. Willie Frazier wants to talk to us about Item N and Item P. Uh, Mr. Frazier? Thank you for being here, sir. If you would, address your comments to the Chair. You're recognized for five minutes.
Sir, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to be here again on this Tuesday. Um, looking at the items, I read Item N, which is a resolution authorizing the mayor with an agreement with Reeves Construction for $2,719,583.25, with, um, certain amount to be paid from local maintenance funds and the remainder to be paid from splash funds. You know, that touched my heart when I recognized the name Reeves, because I stand for the idea of us as a county, Commissioner, leaders and all, to utilize people and businesses that's from our city, when we talk about spending these funds and not allowing too many of our funds to leave our city. And I think that that'll help grow the city, so I'm very appreciative of this. I just pray that and hope that we do more of it. Use more of our entities and more of our businesses that's actually living and staying and residing in our community, so we can get all our accounts in this city, you know, up to standards and our money, or stay in our city, so we can rebuild this city like the wonderful job that you're already doing. On Item P, the ordinance to approve and appropriate splash revenues for the funding purposes of Booker T. Washington Center. Y'all know I stand for Pleasant Hill, Booker T. Washington Center, and everything in that area, and I heard a few other comments about that area, and the one thing that I wanted to address about that is that the city did agree to, um, to turn around and do a one-time cleanup, but that was of the whole area, and we do have 14 acres inland wood of grave sites and other different things, inland wood cemetery, so that's a large area when you talk about a one-time cleaning, so, and all of the other things that's done. And hopefully, it'll be done in that way, and hopefully, all of it will be done in, you know, in the idea of what the city has decided to do for us and purpose for us in that area. There was one other thing that I wanted to try to address, is I know that you're planning to take a trip recently, riding around the city to commandeer some things, and I really pray that and hope that you'll stop through West Macon, as well as Pleasant Hill, and all of the other areas that you all, uh, stopping in to see what can be done and what we can do in those communities. Even though I stand so much for Pleasant Hill and South Macon, I really am about all of Macon. I was raised in, in West Macon, you know, I've been all over Macon, and I would, humandeer and hope that we'll try to uplift this whole complete city. There's not a part of Macon that I don't care about, and there's not a part of Macon that I don't love, and I appreciate all the stuff you're doing, but please stay involved in every aspect and every area, West Macon and Pleasant Hill included. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. We, we appreciate your comments. Mr. Louis Hargrove? Hey, Mr. Hargrove, how are you? You, you, uh, want to talk to us about the Booker T. Washington and the, uh, uh, Senator and Committee Amendment? You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Permission?
Adjust that microphone, please, sir, so we can, we can hear you.
All right. Uh-
Thank God, it's good. Yes, sir. Rest your comments to the Chair, please, sir.
(Inaudible).[1236.11][1236.11](Laughter).
I'm just reading the rules, huh?
You don't follow the rule.
I try, Mr. Frazier.
Oh, you don't? Oh, you don't follow the charge.
I'm Mr. Hargrove. I've tried.
Anyway, the reason I came up here, uh, stop the violence. It's time for us to start helping each other, become a one Macon. I would bomb them Pleasant Hill, on Prussia Street. From the, uh, Madison Huppert John Playground, raised with Ellis Williams School, Grammar School. Went to Booker T. Washington Center here Wednesday night, from Loudoun, age, all up. People come from all sections of town to Booker T. Washington Center, have a good time, dance and so forth. Uh, I think that's, uh, Burke Bibb district. What I was suggesting to Burke, we need to make that out of a resource center and go back in the history. Maybe get Dubal, bring us some history about where we came from. Maybe we'll find out where we're going. But then also, you're talking about doing something on Prussia Street. And then also, you're talking about green space. Man, we got enough green space. Over there, open hay on Avenue, I don't know if that's, uh, Burke Bibb district or not. Y'all gave that man $770,000 for that little space right over there by Atlantic Academy. We need to rebuild our communities. These historic districts, you don't need to keep putting law and all students over in them, uh, Pleasant Hill. Go clean streets up there, on the top of Third Avenue. We want our communities back. Rebuild. Stop hollering about green space. And Burke, I want you to keep a watch on this stuff going on around here. I know you said you're not gonna run anymore, but why are you in there? Come on, get up. Let's do something. Watch it, monitor it. It needs to be monitored, Carl.
Mr. Hargrove, address your comments to the Chair, please, sir.
Are you gonna tell me where to look, look at?
No, sir. I'm just trying to-
I can look anywhere I want.
I'm just trying to tell you what the rules say. The rules say you're supposed to address-
You do not go by no rules, ma'am. For the simple reason I know that.
All right, well, I'm, I'm trying to-
I was on the boat.
I'm trying to go by this one.
And I came to you, and you ain't do a thing about it. So don't tell me about no rules. I can look around, anytime I get ready. Remember that.
Yes, sir.
I'm not your stepchild. Everybody have a good evening and thank God. Carl, you cuss yourself, and you gonna bleed just like me. And you're going back in that grind one day, back to the dirt. Thank y'all. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hargrove. We appreciate you bringing in, and we appreciate your comments. Those are the only two that signed up to talk about agenda items, so we'll move on now. Next item on the agenda is, uh, reports from outstanding committees. First, Operations and Finance Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. Operations and Finance Committee met on August 13th, 2019, and took the following action. The committee approved the following agreements. An agreement with the Houston County Board of Health, program for lease of office space in the amount of $21,215. A professional services agreement with compliance point for the data security in the amount of $65,000. We approved two work detail agreements, one with Dooley State Prison, and one with McEver Probation Detention for work details. The committee approved the following splash projects. A sales agreement with Great Southern Recreation for splash pad equipment at South Bibb Recreation Center in the amount of $1.9 million. An agreement with Smallwood Reynolds Stewart, Stewart and Associates for architectural engineering for renovation of the Macon City Auditorium in the amount of $150,000. We also approved an agreement with Reeves Construction for $2.7 million, um, to be paid from local MIG funds and the remaining to be paid for, from splash bond proceeds for repairing and resurfacing of roads. The appropriations are up to $1.1 million for funding for the purpose of improvements at Booker T. Washington Center, and appropriations of $971,420 for the proposed parking deck at the new courthouse, and upgrades to the towers and radio systems. The committee approved reinstating the position of Tennis Center Manager. The committee also authorized the accepting of a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Project Safe Neighborhoods Program in the amount of $44,640 allocated to the Bibb County Sheriff's Office for training opportunities, outreach programs, and the hiring of a firearms examiner. The committee approved the following supplemental appropriations. The Macon Judicial Circuit's Public Defender in the amount of $92,625 for an additional public defender. The Macon Judicial Circuit's District Attorney's Office in the amount of $58,542 from the RICO funds for an additional school justice partnership case manager. And the Bibb County Superior Court's Clerk in the amount of $28,133 for an additional general clerk. This concludes the Operations and Finance Committee report. Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Watkins. Uh, next, our Economic and Community Development Committee report, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Mr. Mayor and, and fellow Commissioners, the Economic and Community Development Committee met on August 13th, 2019, and took the following action. The committee approved the following appointments. Leona Rogers, Todd Dixon, and Joe Robinson were appointed to the Region Five Emergency Medical Services Council. Commissioner Joe Allen, Ms. Cherie Stevens, and Ms. Rachel Holler, uh, were appointed to the Pedestrian Safety Review Board. The committee also heard an update on the film, uh, industry. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. I understand, uh, public safety, no report?
No report.
All right, sir. Uh, that takes us to Facilities and Engineering Committee, and, uh, that report will be given to us by Chairman Jones. Chairman Jones?
Yes, sir. Facilities and Engineering also met on August 13th, 2019, and took the one, one action here, the following action the committee approved, naming of the intersection of Rivley Ridge and Old Forsyth Road, which has been known as the Triangle for many runners and cyclists for many decades now. And this will be named in honor based on the improvements that has taken it from a scruffy dirt piece of land to a nice section where people from all over Bibb County and around can, can stop, and, and so it'll be named, Macon Fitness and Training Triangle, thanks to the Macon Tracks Club for their persistence and their financial wherewithal to do this. That concludes the program. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much, Chairman Jones. Uh, that, uh, leads us then to next item on the agenda, Consent Agenda, but there are no items, uh, no alcohol beverage licenses, uh, for us to consider tonight, so we'll move directly into old business. And the first item of old business is the appointment of a new director, uh, at Solid Waste Disposal, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to appoint Pat Rains as Director of Solid Waste and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, uh, and, uh, Pat Rains is confirmed as Director of Solid Waste Disposal. Pat, I see you back there, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. We, we appreciate it. By the way, get, get, get with, get with me about the first speaker tonight.[1795.83][1795.83](Laughter). All right. Um, next is- All right. Next is an appointment of a new director at Parks and Beautification, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to appoint Michael W. Gleason as Director of Parks and Beautification and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. We're excited to have Michael Gleason. I understand he'll start with us in approximately two weeks. He's got to give notice to his current employer, but we'll be starting in about two weeks. We look forward to that. And I think we all look forward to continuing development of parks and beautification in the community. Item C is next, and that's a professional service agreement for brokerage and consulting services for health benefits, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with MFP Corporation for brokerage and consulting services related to strategic benefit planning, design, funding, administration, and communication with respect to employee benefit programs to be paid by the healthcare fund and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item D, which is a resolution to adopt the recommendation of the Board of Trustees of our new defined contribution retirement plan, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve and adopt the Healthcare and Retirement Benefits Committee Recommendation to approve the recommended investment fund lineup for participants in the newly created Macon Bibb County 457B Deferred Compensation and 401A Plans and for other lawful purposes.
The Macon Bibb County Defined Contribution Plan Board of Trustees recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item E, which is a resolution to request the Healthcare and Retirement Benefits Committee to participate in the pay scale study, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to request the Healthcare and Retirement Benefits Committee to assist in assessing and making recommendations to the Macon Bibb County Commission related to the overall job categorization and compensation packages of all Macon Bibb County employees in parallel with any study conducted by an outside consultant and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Now, next is a resolution to appoint members to the Region Five Emergency Medical Services Council, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission reappointing Todd Dixon and Joe Robinson and appointing Leona Rogers to fulfill the unexpired term of Jason Brady as members of the Region Five Emergency Medical Services Council and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Department recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution for a lease agreement with the Houston County WIC program, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement of extension with the Houston County Board of Health WIC program for the lease of office space located at 457 Oglethorpe Street in the amount of $21,215 for one year and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a professional service agreement for data security auditing services, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional service agreement with compliance point incorporated for data security auditing services in the amount of $65,000 to be paid from the FY19 IT Budget Capital Improvements Computer and Hardware Line Item and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item I, which is a resolution to authorize the agreement with work details from Dooley State Prison, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a work detail agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections for three offender work details from Dooley State Prison at a cost of $118,500 payable out of the Public Works Department budget and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item J is a similar resolution for prison details out of McEver Probation Detention Center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a work detail agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections for seven offender work details from McEver Probation Detention at a cost of $276,500 payable out of the department budgets and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item K is a resolution to authorize the purchase of some splash pad equipment for the new South Macon Bibb County Recreation Center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a purchase and sell agreement with Great Southern Recreation LLC for splash pad equipment for the South Macon Bibb Recreation Center in the amount of $191,663.88 to be paid from Splotch Bond Funds and our Splotch Bond Proceeds and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to hire an architect, an architectural firm, for improvements in Macon City Auditorium, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Smallwood Reynolds Stewart, Stewart and Associates Incorporated for the provision of architectural engineering and design services in preparation for the renovation of the Macon City Auditorium in the amount of $150,000 plus 8% of the cost of renovations payable for Splotch Bond Proceeds and our Splotch revenues and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Winn, got your light on?
Yes, sir. I know we've talked about this in committee meetings, and I don't like this 8%, and I know that's standard procedure, but I just, you know, it can go up to $950,000. That gives me no comfort either to know that it's capped at $950,000. So I want to make sure that when we look at this, that the cost of renovations, we follow that to make sure what they're doing, because they're going to be charging us 8% of those renovations. So I just want to make sure we do that.
Okay. Thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item M is our next item, and that's an ordinance to approve money from the Splotch Proceeds or Splotch Bonds to provide for repair of the auditorium roof project and the hiring of the architects and engineering firm anticipated renovations. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to $1,993,420 from Splotch Bond revenues and our Splotch Bond proceeds to provide funding for the auditorium roof project and hiring of an architect slash engineering firm for anticipated renovations and to provide funding for continued improvements to the Coliseum and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is item N, and that is a resolution to enter into an agreement with Reeves Construction for the local maintenance and improvement grant improvements, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Reeves Construction Company for $2,719,583.25 with $2,40,288.96 to be paid from local maintenance and improvement grant funds and the remaining $679,294.23 to be paid from Splotch Bond Funds and our Splotch revenues for the purpose of repairing and resurfacing various roads throughout Macon Bibb County and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate $623,000 from Splotch Proceeds for the local maintenance and improvement grant match money, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to $623,131 from Splotch Bond revenues and our Splotch Bond proceeds in the calendar year 2019 Roads and Bridges L-MIG Line Item to provide funding for the Reeves Construction Contract and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you. I'm going to vote for this, of course, because it involves, because of the subject matter. But I'm wondering if we don't need to review the, and maybe this is what we'll, I'll maybe ask the Facilities Chair, if we could review the process for putting these lists together and also the process for certifying that these roads, the work has been done appropriately and all of that. I know that there's a process, there has to be a process in place, but I would like for us to kind of look at that process. And I'd like to have more input, and I've said it several times, more input into the list. And I know there is a way that these lists are put together, and there have to be some priorities, but I know that there are some priorities that I think ought to be on there. And so we, as commissioners, need to maybe have a little more say-so in those roads that actually go on there, because we're representing those areas. We get the complaints from people. And, but then we got a list of, you know, of streets that are going to be worked on. So I would just like for, to ask the Chair of Facilities if we could not have that as a part of our discussion at one of your meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Jones, got your light on?
Just a quick response. I agree we ought to have more input. As you know, now it's done by the county engineer. He does try to take in consideration each and every one of the nine districts. But I agree with Commissioner Lucas. We need to have more input and more say-so and more recommendations as to where it goes sometimes, because we're traveling the roads and we're listening to constituents, so that's a valid point.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Winn, got a comment from you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I also agree with Commissioner Lucas that we need to have some input on this, because all of our districts have roads that need some kind of improvement, and I think we need to be, we have input to what that is and where that is. And I think all the districts should have a piece of this, at least something in their district that's going on, because I've had people approach me about roads, and I know every commissioner probably has. So I think we do need to have the input here, or at least see what's going on before this money's distributed.
Thank you, Commissioner Winn. Commissioner Allen, got a comment from you at this point, sir?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, some years ago, we did have comments that we could make, and the engineers would listen to us and work with us, and we would go with them out to properties. And we don't know this now until it's time for us to do this. And, you know, like the trip that we're planning on taking next week, I'd like in the future, we go on some of these road trips, make road trips out there, because that's what people travel, are the roads. And I have a lot of constituents in my area that are asking about different roads, and we can't get it done. There's no money. But, you know, I would like to be able to do that, and I hope media goes with us so they could do some of the roads and show them exactly what we're running into. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance with an amendment for the Booker T. Washington expense, and the amendment for some improvements along Percy Street, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to $1,134,974 for Splotch Bond revenues and our Splotch Bond proceeds in calendar year 2019 Blight remediation to provide funding for the purpose of improvements to the Booker T. Washington Center to include, but not be limited to, building improvements, pool improvements, and the demolition of at least three homes adjacent to the center and for the streetscape improvements along Percy Street and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance recommends approval, and Committee of the whole recommends approval of the amendment. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance as amended signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance as amended is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate some additional Splotch funds for radio towers and design of a parking deck, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to $971,420 from Splotch Bond revenues and our Splotch Bond proceeds to provide funding for the purpose of contracting for the design of the proposed parking deck for the new courthouse, which is $10,000, and to provide funding for upgrades to communication towers and radios as identified by the Information Technology Department in the amount of $961,420 and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is item R, which is a resolution to approve the 25th Amendment to the timeline, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve the 21st Amendment to the 2018 Splotch Project Timeline and Budget as presented by the Splotch Project Manager and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item S is a resolution to accept a grant, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Project Safe Neighborhoods Program in the amount of $44,640 with no local match to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office to fund training opportunities, outreach programs, and hiring a firearms examiner and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is... have it. The resolution is adopted. Item T is an ordinance to amend the Macon Judicial Circuit Public Defender Organizational Chart and to make other changes, including appropriation of amounts of money, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend the Macon Judicial Circuit Public Defender's Organizational Chart and to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of ninety-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars from fund balance in the FY-20 budget to hire an additional assistant public defender and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to make some changes in the District Attorney's Office organizational chart and approve some money for an additional school justice partnership case manager position, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend the Macon Judicial Circuit District Attorney's Office organizational chart and to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars from fund balance in the RICO fund in the FY-20 budget to fund an additional school justice partnership case manager position and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Mayor Protem, I got your light on, sir.
I just saw a different amount. I mean, can we, somebody elaborate on that? I saw a different amount. What exactly are we doing, and why does, why do we have to give, so we, we, we giving permission to use RICO funds?
The, the District Attorney, as I understand it, and I may need to call on the county attorney, is I understand that the District Attorney has to have approval to move money out of the RICO fund, 'cause it has to be used for certain specified purposes, and this is like insurance for him to present it to us so that he can move that money and, and to hire this school justice partnership case manager position, but the amount that I've got here now was fifty-eight thousand, five forty-two, and that's a-
Yeah, that's, that's, well, that's why I was saying that the, the amount was different, and I would ask the attorney, a, a year or so ago, I had a resolution that would ask for a percentage amount of RICO funds for a public safety initiative, so I need to just go back and look and revisit that, because, you know, I don't want it to be a situation where money's sitting and all of a sudden somebody's just trying to figure out a way to use it, you know, 'cause, I mean, we have plenty of ways to use it, so I'm just, I'm just interested. Number one, we corrected the amount. What is the true amount that was read, and while of a sudden are we supposed to be needing a case manager to do what? Because the resolutions were interacted, there was an interacted, interaction of this resolution is like it was read with what the sheriff was trying to do with something else, so did we read this correctly, or, or what? 'Cause it just seemed confusing to me. I know the amount was wrong, but it seemed like it was saying a case manager, but then was it, was that the one before that, what the sheriff was asking for? It just seemed confusing, and maybe I'm confusing y'all.
Well, the, the, the amount in the caption is fifty-eight thousand, five forty-two, and in the body of the resolution, it's fifty, fifty-eight thousand, five forty-two, and on Exhibit B attached there, too, is fifty-eight thousand, five forty-two, so fifty-eight thousand, five forty-two seems to be consistent is the amount, and the case, and the, the school justice coordinator position, the District Attorney explained that when he was here.
And maybe, and I wasn't here, so that's why I was asking, but I'm, I'm just, so this is a totally new position.
Right, for, for school, school justice, I mean, and, and I'm, I'm kinda going out, I'm kinda going out on a limb here, but, but sometimes when, when students commit criminal offenses, there's a, there's a better way to handle them.
Yeah, it's called juvenile court. It's called juvenile court. That's what it's called, not, not a case. So that's what I'm asking about. We're creating things, and we will, we are approving things just because money is sitting somewhere and we need money for public safety, so I'm just asking and inquiring, and, and I really would, you know, like to see us take, 'cause it's like when certain people come, we just automatically say, oh, the money's sitting, oh, it's RICO, it's nobody's money, but I know that I asked for a resolution asking for one percent of funding, so I'm asking going forward. I wasn't here when he came and so forth, so, and, and, yeah, and I would just like a motion to table.
Could I just say that they pulled up the wrong caption? They've apologized. The correct caption is on the screen now.
Well, that's what caused a reaction from me, and now we've got the correct one, so, Mr. Mayor, you didn't, you're not, you either, you know.
No, do you still, do you still wish to make a motion to table?
No, I, I want us to present and get the information correctly on the screen and so forth that was there, but, you know, if, if y'all are satisfied with it, we'll move forward, but I'm just saying that, if, I would like to know how, did he express, how much money is in the fund? Because what I'm saying is, we're all of a sudden, we're creating positions because funding is there, and if somebody raises an issue and say, oh, now we gotta start spending the money, so we have ways that we can, we wanna spend money too, and so we've gotta approve it, then I wanna be able to say, I at least want one percent to create a public safety fund to further assist our law enforcement in their public safety efforts. That's all I'm saying, because money's coming out of the general fund. If the RICO money is being collected and it's sent in an open fund, then shouldn't we be able to use it for public safety, other issues? We're creating a case manager fund. What, what, what's been going on for years that all of a sudden we're creating something, you know, through juvenile court? Does juvenile court not have supervisors and all of these things? So why are we creating something with some money that's just sitting, and I, I yield?
Commissioner Lucas, your, your light is on.
Yeah, thank you, and many of the comments that the Mayor Protem has made, I totally agree with as far as the uses of some of these funds, but I think the law says that there are certain allowable kinds of things, the attorney could, allowable kinds of things, but we're, the only thing that they have to do is to report, that the requirement is that they report to us how they have used these funds, that's the sheriff and the District Attorney. That's the way I understand it, but on this particular thing, this is an item, some months ago, there was a collaborative that was brought together because so many children in the Bibb Schools District were being sent, were being punished when there were alternate ways that they, that they could have been dealt with, they could have gone into alternative programs that would have helped them to get past the wrongdoing that they had been charged with, and so I remember attending a meeting, and you had the school system involved, Bibb Sheriff's Office, DFACs, all of the agencies that you would think would be involved, juvenile courts were represented there. It was a two or three-day experience, and from that came this partnership, and there certainly is a need for this position to have someone who would actually look at each student on a case-by-case basis and determine what alternative methods could be used, counseling, family intervention, all of these kinds of things are brought to bear, and all of those entities were represented there, so it's a good, it's a good program, and we ought to approve it, but I do agree with you that there is a need for us to know more about the uses of these RICO funds.
Good, thank you, Commissioner Lucas. The only thing I'll say is that, that if we put up a, a wrong caption with a different amount, we've corrected that now, that everything in your book and, and your pad should be fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars. That seems to be consistent through the caption as well as all of the exhibits with it, and I do note that this is to fund an additional school justice partnership case manager, so I'm assuming that there must already be one or more, and this is to hire an additional one, apparently because of the need and how well the program is managed, and that's in the discretion of the District Attorney, who, as you know, is an elected official, so that was his recommendation to us, and that's also the recommendation of the Operations and Finance Committee to approve it. It, you, do you have a further comment?
Do we know who the person is that's being hired?
No, sir, I do not. Matter of fact, I don't even know that, they may have to post it and, and, and see who applies. I, I don't, we don't, I don't think that there was any conversation at all about who it was.
Okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance at fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Item V is, is another ordinance, this time at the request of the Superior Court Clerks, to change her organizational chart and realign some additional money, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption, and y'all pull up the right caption back then, Rachel.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend the Bibb County Superior Court Clerk's organizational chart and to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars from fund balance and a transfer of sixteen thousand from the contractual services temporary line item in the FY-20 budget to hire an additional General Clerk One and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is a resolution to hire and restate the, the tennis center manager, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to reinstate the position of tennis center manager and to coordinate with Human Resources to revise organizational chart to reflect the reinstatement of the position, to develop an appropriate job description with applicable requirements and other, and any other relevant details regarding the position and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, and at the committee of the whole meeting immediately prior to this, we determined that county tennis manager would be a more appropriate title, and the county attorney indicated he would make that chart, that change when he brings back the organizational chart for our approval, so it'll be actually a county tennis manager. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. That brings us to item X, and that's the renaming of a facility on Rivley Ridge and O'Forsyth Road, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to name the median at the intersection of Rivley Ridge and O'Forsyth Road, commonly referred to as the Triangle, the Macon Tracks Club Fitness and Training Triangle, and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item Y, and that's some additional appointments to the Macon Bibb County Pedestrian Safety Review Board, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission appointing the Commissioner Joe Allen, Sharice Stevens, and Rachel Holler to the Macon Bibb County Pedestrian Safety Review Board and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Finally, Resolution Z is a resolution to, to include finance charges in years two and three and to increase the amount of a contract from one point nine up to two point one for the Dell license agreement, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission amending Resolution R-19-0143 to authorize the mayor to execute an installment agreement with Dell Financial Services, LLC in the total amount of two million, one hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars payable over three years for countywide Microsoft Windows, Server, and Office Suites Enterprise software licenses to be paid from IT's repair and maintenance, software licenses and maintenance budget and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is our new business. These are items that'll be read for the first time tonight. There may be additional items that come down from the county attorney's office later this week, so in addition to what I'm fixing to read, be sure and check the agenda that comes out on Friday afternoon for a complete list of ordinances and resolutions that will be heard in committee at the next meeting on September, excuse me, August the 27th, or as soon thereafter as they can be scheduled. First is a resolution adopting a Title VI compliance policy and plan. I'm gonna refer that to the committee of the whole. Next, item B is a resolution adopting a limited English proficiency policy and plan. I'm gonna refer that to the committee of the whole. Now, next is a resolution adopting a Title VII compliance policy and plan. I'm gonna refer that to the committee of the whole. And next is a resolution to appoint Sandra Woodford individually to the Macon Bibb County Land Bank Authority. I'm gonna refer that to the committee of the whole. And finally, an ordinance to amend the Macon Judicial Circuit Bibb County Superior Court organizational chart and approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and four dollars from fund balance in the FY-20 budget to fund the Director of Accountability Court's position. I'm gonna refer that to the committee of the whole so it can be heard at our next meeting. Now, that's all of the new business that has come down thus far this week, but again, be sure and check your agenda that'll come out on Friday afternoon. Now it's time for public comments on non-agenda items.
There's one other item that's come to my attention.
Okay.
Commissioner Bibbins has a parliamentary inquiry about, he missed a vote on E, and he was recorded as a yes, and he wanted to be recorded as a no. Is that correct? And he wanted my, or our, your input into how he could do that, and if it's unanimous consent from the-
Motion to reconsider.
Or unanimous consent. If, if there's an objection to that, then we do a motion to reconsider.
What happened though?
Commissioner Bibbins meant to record a no vote on item E instead of a yes vote, and he's asked.
Right, so the first question is, the item, item E was a, a resolution to request the Health Care and Retirement Committee to assist in, in making, assessing and making recommendations about the pay scale and to work in tandem with any outside agency that we hire to conduct, you know, a pay scale study. That was unanimous, nine to zero, but, but Commissioner Bibbins said he meant to, to voice a no vote on that. Is there objection, so is another way to say, is there objection to allowing him to be registered as a no vote? That'd make it eight to one?
No.
With, yeah, right, without, without objection, we'll just make that as a clerical, clerical change, so it was eight to one, but the ayes still have it, and the resolution is adopted. Now, we've got item 11, which is the public comments on non-agenda items, and did anybody get the sign-up sheets? Oh, thank you. Madam Clerk, you are on the spot. Thank you very much. First, we've got Creed Henshaw that wants to talk to us about an ordinance for adding an election holiday. Pastor Henshaw, Reverend Henshaw, we thank you for your patience. Glad you are here tonight. You are recognized for up to five minutes and direct your comments to the chair, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this won't take even one minute. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you for letting me open last time's meeting with a prayer. I would simply urge you to please bring the voting holiday ordinance that I think you have been discussing, perhaps in the committee on the whole, just to bring it forward out here. just to bring it forward out here where there can be public comment at the appropriate time. I have some things that if you bring it out, I'd like to say, but not going to say them tonight because that's not necessary. Thank you for everything you do. I look forward to the evening when that can be discussed in here. Thanks so much.
Very good. Thank you very much for being here and for your patience. Renee Bumpus also wants to talk to us about the ordinance for an official holiday. Good to see you, Renee. You are recognized for up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to share. And likewise, with Minister Creed, I have the same sentiments about the ordinance. So, I would like to thank the sponsors of the ordinance to provide the employees with a paid holiday, and if that would be permissible for the entire community to hear that conversation and dialogue that's taking place in committee, I think it would be important to our community as well because I experienced in the last election some challenges with voting. And it's, I was raised to believe that we have a right to vote, and it's most, our fundamental right, and we need to protect it, and it is also important for us to work for it as well. So, I look forward to Macon being the first to get this done. I think it'd be nice to have a positive light on our community. We know the challenges that we face, but I think it would be essential to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bumpus. We appreciate you being here. I appreciate your comments. Finally, Mr. Donald Richardson has some grassroots reflections for us. Mr. Richardson, always good to see you, sir, and you are recognized for up to five minutes. Please direct your comments to the chair. Yes, we can certainly, we can certainly make that announcement. Matter of fact, I'll call on you since you were the one that made the most, take it off the table and refer it back to the Committee of the Whole. Yes, sir.
Yes, just so those two previous speakers know that there was a motion that I made to untable the Election Day Holiday. And then for, at our next meeting, and I'll consult with Commissioners, that maybe we will consider a conversation of, with the public and employees as well. So, just let folks know that that did happen at five o'clock today.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Richardson, you are recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you. Proverbs, Chapter 23.
Oh, my favorite.
When thou sitest to eat with a ruler, consider diligently what is before thee. My commentary to that is a book called The Holy Roman Empire by James Bryce, Chapter Five, Page 53. And because the name of emperor had now ceased among the Greeks and their empire was possessed by a woman, it then seemed both to Leo, the Pope himself, and to all the holy fathers who were present in the self-saying council as well as the rest of the Christian people that they ought to take to be Emperor Charles, King of the Franks, who held Rome herself, where the Caesars had always want to sit, and all the other regions which he ruled through Italy and Gaul and Germany. And inasmuch as God had given all these lands into his hand, it seemed right that with the help of God and at the prayer of the whole Christian people, he should have the name of emperor also, whose petition King Charles will not to refuse, but submitting himself of all humility to God and at the prayer of the priests and of the whole Christian people on the day of the nativity of our Lord Jesus Christ, he took on himself the name of emperor, being consecrated by the Lord Pope Leo, very similar in substance in account of the chronicle to Mosaic. Now, when the king, upon the most holy day of the Lord's birth, rising to mass after prayer before confession of the Blessed Peter the Apostle, Leo the Pope, with the consent of all the bishops and priests and of the Senate of the Franks and likewise of the Romans, set a golden crown upon his head, and the Roman people also shouted aloud. And when the people had made an end of chanting the lollies, he was adored by the Pope after the manner of the emperors of old. But this also was done by the will of God. For while the said emperor bowed at Rome, certain men were brought unto him, who said that the name of emperor had ceased among the Greeks, and that among them the empire was held by a woman called Irene, who had by gale laid hold on her son the emperor and put out his eyes, and taken the empire to herself, as is written at the lyah in the Book of Kings. Which when Leo the Pope and all the assembly of the bishops and priests and abbotess hurried in the Senate of the Franks and all the elders of the Romans, they took counsel to rest of the Christian people that they should name Charles, King of the Franks, to be emperor, seeing that he held Rome, the mother of empire, where the Caesars and emperors were always used to sit, and that the heathen might not mock the Christians if the name of emperor should have ceased among the Christians. These two accounts are both from a German source that which follows in Roman, written probably within this, some fifty or sixty years of the event. It is taken from the life of Leo III, which used to pass under the name of Anastasius, the papal librarian. After these things came the day of the birth of our Lord Jesus Christ, and all men were again gathered together in the Alpha Cet Basilica of the Blessed Peter the Apostles. And then the gracious and venerable Pontiff did with his own hands crown Charles with a very precious crown. Then all the faithful people of Rome, seeing the defense that he gave and the love that he bare to the Holy Roman Church and her vicar, did by the will of God and of the Blessed Peter, the keeper of the keys of the kingdom of heaven, cried with one accord with a loud voice, till Charles, the most pious Augustus, crowned of God, the great and peace-giving Emperor, be life and victory. While he before the holy confession to the Blessed Peter the Apostle was invoking deeper saints, it was proclaimed thrice, and he was chosen by law to be the Emperor of the Romans. Thereon the most holy Pontiff anointed Charles with holy oil, and likewise his most excellent son to be king upon the very day of the birth of our Lord Jesus Christ. And when the mass was finished, then after the mass, the most reigning Lord Emperor offered gifts. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, thank you for those grassroots reflections. We appreciate your perseverance and your being here with us tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm not aware of any points of personal privilege. We've reached the end of our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn? And without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're adjourned.